Good morning and welcome to the July 13, 2022 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand with me. Dear Henry Father, I just thank you for today. First and foremost, I pray for rain. I just thank you for the city. I thank you for our police and fire and first responders. I just thank you for them. Just please keep them safe as they keep us safe. I pray for a hedge of protection around our city, just to keep all of us safe. Just thank you for this council. Thank you for everyone that's here. Thank you for our fabulous city. In your son's name we pray. I'm in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will begin with the minutes from June 8, 2022, and the special call meeting on June 8, 2022.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Winn, second by Curtis. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. A1, we going down there for A1 to take a picture?
No. We're going to go through the presentation first.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
You'll have, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cough this morning, but luckily I have my voice back. I come to you this morning to present the 2021 Tree City USA Growth Award. This year, I wanted to do something a little bit different and give a brief presentation, brief presentation about what this award is and how we came to receive it. So the Tree City USA program is a program by the Arbor Day Foundation, and it's a designation that is awarded to people, to cities who are eligible by having a community tree ornament, have an annual Arbor Day celebration, spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and lastly, have a tree boarder department. And in our case, we have the Tyler Trees Committee. This is also our 13th year being recognized as a Tree City USA. And so the Growth Award is an award that is granted to participating cities who go above and beyond and demonstrate higher levels of tree care and community engagement. I'd like to point out that in Texas, we have 92 cities that are recognized as tree cities. However, last year, 2021, only 12 cities received this award. So 2021 events that made the city of Tyler eligible for this award include our City Arbor Day Celebration. So in 2021, we hosted two plantings where we were able to plant 50 trees at M.J. Scott and Waldorf Park. We were able to have 172 volunteers. In addition to the city's Arbor Day, we helped UT Tyler put on their Arbor Day. And so the University of Texas hosted three planting events at the Tyler, Palestine, and Longview campuses. There, 100 student volunteers participated, and we were able to plant 78 trees. In addition to our planting events, we had the annual seedling giveaway, where we gave out 1,500 seedlings to citizens of the public, and these were all planted on private land. We were able to reach 123 people. And I'm sure you know, in 2021, we had Winter Storm Yuri. So that year, we had people lined up, ready to receive trees, and lots of sad stories about how many trees were lost. We also started a wildlife tree initiative to preserve low-risk dying or dead trees to benefit our urban wildlife. I think it's important to illustrate how important this is because over one-fourth of forest-dependent wildlife depend on dead or dying trees for food, habitat, and shelter. So this is absolutely crucial. So in addition to our community outreach events and our educational outreach, we had lots of other little things that made us eligible for this award, including pruning 11 different city locations. We spent two months in the winter pruning, and we spent over 120 man-hours removing mistletoe from some trees. And then, in addition to our planting events, we had an additional 200 trees planted out at Lindsay Park. And we also established new monitoring protocols for young trees. And also, because of Winter Storm Yuri, we've had to ramp up our mortality monitoring, and so we now have new protocols in place for that. But other than that, I just want to say a big thank you to everyone who made this possible, including the Tyler Trees Committee, park staff, and of course, all of our community volunteers. It is my recommendation that the city council accept the 2021 Tree City USA Growth Award from the Arbor Day Foundation.
Is this an action item?
No, sir.
Okay. First of all, wow. First of all, thanks for everything, I mean, everything you've done. Since Winter Storm Yuri, it's been a challenge. And I know your preference is to save trees and not cut trees. And I know that it's hard for you to cut them down, but thank you for the replanning and replacing, because we need them. So thank you for what you do. Have you got people here that we could come down and do a picture? Or is it just?
Well...
Trees committee, or people that you want to have your picture taken with, or not?
We have stuff, but our committee members are not here. Our community, yeah, our committee members are not here. Tree time is a little late, so. We had one that was on his way, but we can just go ahead and take a photo with park staff and council if that works.
Let's do that.
Okay.
It is an honor here to be here today before you to present the, for this presentation on recognition of the Tyler Downtown National Historic District. I do have, I shared this presentation with Amber Verona from the Downtown Main Street Department, and she's going to talk about some of the impacts of this designation. But I wanted to first just kind of go through what the downtown, or what a National Historic District is. It's the official list of the nation's historic places worthy of preservation. It's listed on the National Register. As a district, does not add any other restrictions on the use, treatment, transfer, or deposition of private property. What it does is allow for historic tax credits from the federal level and the state level to rehabilitate contributing properties to the national district. And so it is an added benefit to revitalization of the downtown area. On May 21, 2022, the Texas Historical Commission, State Board of Review, approved Downtown Tyler as a district in the National Register of Historic Places. The district encompasses 68.5 acres of land in the downtown planning area. As you can see here on the map, outlined in yellow, that is the national district. The, composing the core of Downtown Tyler, the district includes the county courthouse, the square, the federal district courthouse buildings, as well as city hall. The downtown district has a total of 133 properties. Twelve of those properties are currently listed in the National Register of Historic Places. 95 properties were identified as contributing to the district, and so they may be eligible for the tax credit rehabilitation program. So that is a benefit for those properties as well. And the, like I mentioned, the boundaries of the Tyler Downtown Historic District contain the largest collection of intact surviving historic structures associated with the founding, the growth and the development of Tyler as a significant governmental, agricultural, shipping, and petrochemical center, as well as a vibrant central business district. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amber to discuss what the district means for the downtown area and...
Thank you, guys. I made myself bullet points, because as you all know, I can sit and talk about downtown forever, and so it's a good thing. And so one of the key things about establishing this downtown historic district is that is part of our strategic plans, the historic preservation downtown, as well as within Tyler curves. And so this is a huge win for downtown, but also for the Tyler community, as we are knocking off some of those action items. And again, Kyle has mentioned the incentive boost that is coming through federal and state. It's always nice to add additional incentive tools to our toolbox, and it's also nice that we can push it over to additional grants and tax credit programs. Just within the year or so of us working through this process and actually realizing that it could be a finalization of this project, the Lindsay, the Fair, the Carlton, the Holly Motor Club, the Old Grayhound Station, and a few other major projects that we have been keeping an eye on with downtown have sold and have started, just because with the hopes of being able to apply for these type of grants because of the designation. So that is, that is a huge win as well, and we are really looking forward to those projects coming to completion. And also, it enhances the appeal of a designation downtown, as we are all working towards, not only the revitalization effort, but downtown itself is huge. It is from front to gentry to Palis to Bentham. And having a National Historic District allows us to kind of hone in on some of our major historic attributes that we have within the downtown area. So it's another, another point that we can really utilize in working with this in Tyler and promoting downtown. Another thing that we can now do, because we have a National Historic District, is go through a cultural district designation with Texas Commission of Art. So it's another added layer of honoring a designation, but also grant opportunities. And with this, we're able to honor Tyler's unique and historic character, while also preparing for the success and growth of downtown through the grants, and also recognizing the area as one of the, the seven districts in Tyler. So we are super, super ready and excited. This has been a long time coming. I think we first started it back in 2014, 15, when we tried and tried to get in. We just were persistent, and we were able to do this. So we are ready. I am excited that it squeezed in my time frame, so I was able to celebrate. And speaking of celebrations, we are celebrating today on the square from three to four. We're unveiling our new signs that we've worked with traffic, and they'll be going on around that district area. So we hope you guys, everybody is welcome to join us from three to four. I do have a huge tent, so it'll be shaded, it'll be quick and sweet, with all refreshments and fun little delight. So I hope you guys can join us, and we really appreciate your time and understanding that we got this district.
Well, Amber, thank you to you and Kyle for doing this. And we have had some conversations with some of these people you're talking about with downtown revitalization. And it really is a tool, when you think of the state and federal tax credits, I think the total is 45% or possible 45%. And that's just, it's a big deal. And we all are trying to promote downtown, and this is another great tool in the toolbox. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you.
One quick question. Amber, Kyle, does a property owner need to make a request if they want their property to be part of the district? Because I noticed on the map, you know, okay, I know that building, that's a historic building, but why wouldn't it be included?
So as you see, typically, most districts are square and nice. This was our, a way to get as many as possible. And order to be put into the district later on, that is something that they can come and talk to us about. So we work with Texas Historical Commission, and this was the boundary that they allowed us to move forward to. But there is also always a possibility to expand that, and that would just be a conversation we can have with the property owners.
Thank you.
And also, the, in the information packet for this meeting, you had, I guess, the application that we had sent to whomever to get this designation. That was, whoever wrote that did a really good job. It was very good.
Yes. We worked with HHM out of Austin. They are a renowned historic preservation consulting firm, and yes, we were very pleased with that.
Learned a lot.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Nikki Engram, and I'm here to request that City Council authorize the city manager to, pardon, to execute a contract with Graycon Construction, Inc., for the Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant and Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant Chlorination/Dechlorination Improvements Project in the amount of $3,661,620. The chlorination and dechlorination buildings at these plants are over 30 years old. It's crucial to maintain these systems and prevent malfunctions like a chlorine gas leak. Keeping these systems running properly will ensure public safety and safety of the staff running the plants. So for the scope of work, the improvements to the Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant will include the rehabilitation and improvements to the chlorination/dechlorination building, the installation of a chlorine and sulfur dioxide scrubber, replacement upgrades to chlorination and sulfur dioxide chemical feed equipment, replacement upgrades to the electrical and control components of the chlorination/dechlorination system. And then, improvements to the Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant will include replacement and upgrades to the chlorination and sulfur dioxide chemical feed equipment, and replacement and upgrades to the electrical and control components of the chlorination/dechloration So as you can see from the map, the Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant site is on the left, and the Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant is on the, or the Southside is on the left and the Westside is on the right. Both project locations are in the southwest corner of each facility, at the chlorination/dechlorination buildings. So the bids that were received for this project, the lowest and only bid that was received was from Graycon Construction, Inc., in the amount of $3,661,620. They are estimated to begin construction, and if approved, they're estimated to begin construction in September 2022, and it'll be a 12-month project that will be completed in September 2023. So it is recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Graycon Construction, Inc., for the chlorination/dechlorination improvement project for the Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant and Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $3,661,620.
Any questions for Nikki?
Yeah, I've got two, Mr. Mayor. Nikki, we only got one bid. Is it such specialized work that it's very limited in those that would do the work? And second question, have the city done work with Graycon before?
Yes, so this is a specialty project. There's a lot of specialty equipment involved, and we have done work with Graycon and have been there, and have had positive experiences with them.
Nikki, does this have anything to do with the odor control out at the Southside Treatment Facility, or is it completely separate from that?
I would leave it separate from that.
Move to approve in one. Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
M2, Leanne.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
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 Okay, sorry.
As you may know, that we are getting ready to do some renovations, some much-needed renovations to Pollard Park. We actually held a public meeting back in April to gain some feedback from the community to see what they wanted and needed. This park actually has one of the oldest playgrounds out of all 28 of our parks. It was installed back in 1993. The conceptual design that you see on the screen was provided to us by HAF Associates at no charge, just to give the community some ideas for the public meeting as to what they can envision in the future. So I am here requesting that you authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with HAF Associates in the amount of $96,500 to prepare for the Pollard Park Design Plan, which will include surveying, detailed site, park and utility design, all necessary permitting, the identification of utility conflicts, if any, coordination with utility companies and outside agencies, environmental coordination, and any other items necessary to successfully develop the project.
Any questions for Leanne? Your area.
No, I'm just excited. We're getting started with it. It's going to be a great, not addition, but renovation to the park, so.
We're excited to.
It's going to be great.
So when will it be done?
So once this is approved, HAF thinks it's about two months until we get the bid docs out, and then we'll keep the bid, the bid out for about three weeks. So we are hoping to bring this back to you by the end of September-ish, beginning of October.
Cool.
More pickleball courts.
Yeah, pickleball?
Yes. Absolutely. We have already promised, our four pickleball courts, at least two will be dedicated specifically to pickleball.
Good. Any other questions for Leanne?
Move to approve in two. Second.
A motion by Curtis, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tiffany, come on down.
Good morning. I am Tiffany Curry in Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm presenting item M3, which is an engineering services contract with KSA Engineers for the Consent Decree Group V Remedial Work. Pipeline analysis, recently completed the fifth assessment of our collection system. They finished ahead of schedule, and we got that, that report submitted to EPA ahead of our July 1 deadline. And out of that report came some recommendations for us to make some improvements to the collection system, which includes 428 manholes and 59,000 linear feet of gravity main remediation, as well as 640-point repairs. KSA has suggested that we divide this up into four packages. We will have a manhole design package, traditional gravity main, CIPP, as well as a pipe bursting package. The estimated construction cost for this work is $21,008, $21.8 million, and the engineering fee is $3,317,100. My request today is that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount not to exceed $3,317,100 with KSA Engineers for the Consent Decree Group V Remedial Measures Implementation Plan.
Tiffany, I can't remember how many groups there are.
There will be 10 total. We are ahead, and we'll essentially, we'll get the majority of the work done in the first seven to eight packages. And then, we've had some manholes that are hard to access, easements that are hard to access, so we'll go back in the last few groups and collect those, those assets that were difficult to get to during the first phase of inspections.
So although we're just at group five, it didn't mean we're just halfway. We're already over halfway.
That's correct. That's correct. We are halfway from a time perspective, but we have completed more than half of the assets.
Any questions for Tiffany?
Move to approve in three. Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Good morning, Cameron.
Good morning.
Our favorite traffic engineer.
Take that as a compliment, but I'm the only one you have right now. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the city of Tyler. So here to talk about an engineering contract for traffic signal design at the intersection of Grande Boulevard and Old Noonday Road. So just a quick location map to make sure you're familiar with the area. So this is on Grande Boulevard between Old Jacksonville Highway and State Highway 155. And a couple of kind of quick views here of that intersection. These are two views from Old Noonday. There's vertical and horizontal curves there in that, at that location. There's an existing flashing yellow light to kind of bring attention to that intersection for that location. And just a little bit of kind of education, when we start talking about traffic signals, is anytime that there's a request, or, you know, we want a traffic signal locations, there's what we call traffic signal warrants that we do. And this comes from the Texas Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And these are basically thresholds. How much volume do you need to potentially justify looking at a traffic signal? And it's not just volumes, there's also crash, accident history that you will look at as well. And just because a traffic signal meets one of these thresholds, that does not necessarily mean we need to install a traffic signal. That's just kind of saying, here's the minimum. Now, is this actually going to improve traffic flow or address a safety concern? And it should move forward. And so that's just kind of a little bit of background. In this case, so there's actually nine different warrants that you can look at, and this specific intersection met three of those. Eight-hour warrant being that there's eight hours of a day that it met the minimum threshold to do a signal. Four-hour volume, which is warrant number two, is meaning that there's four hours of the day that it met certain volume thresholds. And then there's the crash experience. So in this case, the minimum is five crashes a year of a certain type that would be corrected by a traffic signal. So you think of a right-angle crash, somebody pulling out from a side street and getting T-boned, or somebody turning left, those type of crashes could be resolved by a traffic signal. And so you need at least five of those in order to kind of, to look at making a benefit. So those are just a little bit of a background of what you look at when you're trying to consider, should we install a traffic signal or not? Here's just kind of an overview of what that intersection would look like. It includes full mast arms, some curb ramps, pedestrian crossings for any type of future connection. This is a, you know, area's growing in there, so you're going to continue to see increasing in volume. The project includes, as far as from the engineering, survey, design, doing bidding services, and construction administration through the project. And so we'd anticipate probably six to seven months of design, and then you go out to bid, and I would say anywhere from six to 12 months. It really doesn't take that long to construct, construct a traffic signal, say 30 to 60 days, but there's about a six-month lead time for a contractor to probably get traffic signal polls. So that's what kind of some of that duration takes. So with that, I will say this is also contingent upon the HAF sent sales tax approving the funds. We haven't had that meeting yet. So at that next meeting, once that's approved, then we'll move forward, assuming it's approved today. So with that, it is recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering contract with Yvonne Newman Engineering for the Grande Boulevard at Old Noonday Road traffic signal design in the amount of $44,668.15.
Is that a text dot road?
It is. So that section from Old Jacksonville to State Highway 155 is also State Highway 57. So it is a text dot facility. So we do need text dot approval, and that's something we have submitted to them along with our warrant study for them to kind of sign off. But at this point, it's 100% on the city to construct and maintain that traffic signal.
So how much is the signal, the whole?
So I would just, as a budget number, estimate between 300 and 400,000... So I would just, as a budget number, estimate between $300,000 and $400,000 for the actual construction to get that installed.
Any questions for Cameron? Ooh, tie. Motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Anything need to be pulled, or go as is?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment. In reading through our council notes, everybody's experienced a supply shortage of vehicles, and on CA 3, it was noted in our notes that several of the vendors that we looked for to get the replacement vehicle had no vehicles on their lots and not available. So it is a shortage of vehicles.
Okay, is that a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion by Winn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Few items to note. The first one is we released the 2021 crime stats for Tyler this week. The preliminary data for the Tyler Police Department shows that in 2021, there was a reduction in park crimes, which consists of violent crimes and property crimes, as well as a slight increase in crimes being reported. Park one offenses dropped more than 13% compared to 2020 data. There was also a drop of nearly 5% of violent crimes for the year compared to 2020. The city of Tyler overall experienced a slight increase of about 1% in all reported crimes. Chief Toller did put out there the following comment. "The past few years have presented significant challenges to law enforcement agencies throughout our nation and community. While we saw an increase of crimes being reported, I think that is a great sign of trust and faith the Tyler community has in our officers. I'm going to be proud of the members of the Tyler Police Department and the work they do each day to keep Tyler safe." We also saw this week our sales tax figures reported from the Texas Comptroller's SOC website, and it indicated that we were at about $4.56 million for July, which is, if that, remember that is a lagging indicator, that then is reflective of sales in May. And so that is up 4.58% from the previous year. So we continue to see is that being, especially as we've kind of entered the past few months, is either being flat or slight increases for what we've seen on sales tax. You know, the heat was mentioned earlier, everything from the prayer to some of the comments that were being made, and due to the extreme heat, you may notice signs of stress on our brass that we have in our parks. And so please keep in mind that we are keeping an eye on specific locations, such as the Rose Hill Cemetery, Lindsay Park, Pollard Park, City Park, Burkhild, and PT Code Parks that are on our watch list. We continue to put as much water as we can from irrigation system, but that doesn't necessarily take the place of rainwater, which penetrates the soil better and offers better nutrients than our tap water does. And so we are continuing to monitor those and make sure that we are irrigating as much as possible, but just because of the lack of rain, there is only a certain amount that the city can continue to do for those parks, and we will continue to keep a watch on. Big celebration this week, or weekend, as the Texas State Little League will be hosting their tournament at Faulkner Park this weekend, and so you'll see lots of people coming into Tyler, so make sure you give them a big howdy, and welcome to the Rose City, as they get to enjoy baseball in 100-degree-plus heat. And then also, we did celebrate the Fourth of July last week, and the celebration we had at Lindsay Park was also a great success. We had a large crowd, back to probably pre-pandemic numbers that were there, which closed to 1,500 to 2,000 people, coming and going, with about 100 of those reported by the Tyler trains and buses that we provided for free. And so they got to enjoy food from 10 different food vendors, and different activities. Firework show was beautiful, and the community seemed very complimentary of the then-act. An event wouldn't have been possible without all the hard work from our Parks Department, Tyler Police Department, Fire Department, and Solid Waste. And so we thank all of those employees for being there and making sure that our citizens and the citizens from surrounding area were able to have an incredible firework show to celebrate our independence day.
Good. Okay. I also want to shout out to Chief Toller back there. And, you know, I read that report that you were referring to a minute ago, and it's pretty impressive how the crimes gone down in a crazy world that we live in. And what really impressed me was the number of people that are calling the police has gone up. And I think what that means is the citizens, they trust the police, and so they're calling the police department, and the police are going out and meeting with citizens. And I don't think that happens just by chance. And you look at the church and community events and all the things that the police department does to engage with the citizens, and it makes, I think it makes an effort and a huge impact. And once again, we live in a crazy world, and, you know, the number one thing that we all want is for our neighbors to be safe and our kids to be safe, and so kudos to you, Chief Toller, and for all your great. All right, looks like that's it. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I didn't get it first. Motion? We adjourned. Thank y'all for being here.